I want to give a motion to adjourn.
We're the option.
Would everyone be able to see it? The pledge of allegiance remains the same.
I rejoice to the life of the United States of America and to the God who for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, as we gather this evening, this council will ask, as always, for strength and urgent wisdom. I, Members, thank you for the privilege of serving this community that we live in. Jesus, make your prayer.
Amen.
Call order the July 3 meeting of the Mooresville Town Council. Gentlemen, had a moment or had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting. I gave a motion that Amanda approved, as written.
I'll take a motion that we approve as they are.
Motion by Dave, I have a second.
Second.
Dustin, on favor.
Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I did not intend to have any. Under the business, I had a discussion about that, D B N. Wanted to amend that just a little bit. We're just going to start working on the clarifier and not to the point of any contracts or anything like that. But part of the discussion I would like to have on the replacing of the final clarifier would be to possibly install cameras throughout the wastewater treatment plant. I mean, there's crazy stuff. I'm just kidding. But we did have a break-in at one point a few months ago, and it's just protecting another one of our assets. If the gentleman don't mind, I'd like to be able to get estimates or bids to put cameras throughout them if all of our buildings out there may need some outside cameras. And we had a night for approval.
Can we monitor those through dispatch as well? Be available.
Which will say it was a constant PPR too. But I don't know that if we do that, I don't know that the dispatches will be able to break away from the screen.
We have a very valid point there, Mr. President, that hopefully they'll be able to control themselves and take some to look at.
Is it all right if I try that? Yes.
Second.
So moved and seconded on favor.
Aye.
Mark Mathis requesting approval for phase two.
I think you got a email from Diana explaining what we need to do. We're about ready to go live. We're pretty close up. We were hoping to show you that tonight, but had a few perks, so we haven't got it done. Fire Department and Police Department need a few more things done. For that $5,000, really what we have in this remand is 15, and that's pretty reasonable for what I think you guys will all enjoy, and I think the public will enjoy as well. Gives us some of the forms that our employees need to fill out. They'll be able to go online on that website and do those there. I think that's going to be a good thing for us as well. So I would, with that, I would like to make a motion if there's no more questions. If you have questions, while I'm paying, because I don't have any idea what most of them are.
No questions, just comments. We probably move it forward and get the website finally up to today's standards and make the citizens enjoy that. I'll second your motion.
I do have one question then. This phase of it is specifically for the leasing product?
Correct.
So can we?
Correct, because I thought we could do it. Actually, I was going to suggest we could use one of them.
It's a little streamy.
Yeah.
It's in the video today, you're on the stream. Do you do the website?
Have a motion in a second. On favor?
Aye.
Reached out to each of you individually a couple, probably three weeks ago. In regard to a letter that I received from Shane Williams, Williams Rental Properties LLC. It was a request for annexation of 400 North Ridge Drive. I did speak to Shane Williams and asked him if we had a little bit of time to at least see where we're at and make sure, do an evaluation on the effect of annexation there. I had just a few questions. Shane, in looking at that on EGIS, it shows where that, your driveway goes, the driveway to that goes across another lot which you also own. And then there's a third lot there that the family owns. Are you requesting just that one or are you requesting all three parcels to be annexed?
Just the one.
Would you entertain the idea of all three? Just with the, what I've tried to do, and Dave's looking at it to make sure, I'm sure that Dave come that you want to service those properties with sanitaries who can reprovide that service for you. And the next thing is, you know, you have a driveway that will be going in town, out of town, in town. I'm just trying to clarify all of them. Had you ever thought of doing all three of them possibly?
I didn't, but I'd have to check with Mom and Dad on their parcel because, well, I'm entitled to having two, I guess.
I'm not asking you for an answer right now. I mean, it's just something that you would consider?
Yeah, I would consider it, yeah.
Okay.
At least consider it. Would the sewer line go up the driveway as that far as it would go?
I don't know how we can do that, and Dave has looked. He made sure that we had sewer line available there, you know, because the, my first thought process was all of the properties that you would own that were contiguous to town, and that would include, you know, possibly you're having Woodland property. But I don't know that we can get sewer to that. But that's, you know, just get them all in one fell swoop if we could. But I don't know that we could service that one.
And to have a Woodland?
Yeah. Yeah, you know, that's been kind of off and on. You know, we've tried to get sewers up through there back 10, 12 years ago and found miserably at that.
There's one house up there that's in town, but I don't think it's that one.
It's not serviced by sanitary sewer at the time of the request for the annexation. That was pretty much what they understood and did not, did not have any desire. But if you think that that's something you would consider, that would, I think that would keep us from, you know, we've always tried to stray away from doing the island annexation. While that does have one-eighth contingency there on the, at the 400, it is on the backside from the backside. So just looking long-term. Can you, go ahead.
I would like to see you as get all three parts. You could close that pocket down and possibly look into Dylan, your house also.
We could reach down.
Try to get that closed out so it's all the down to 267, since we've got 267 now.
We would surround Jess's house there.
I always wondered if the town had, years ago, not one of the ones or property in town, so they could say he was out of town. Because it is, one of his partners is out. And obviously, I can't speak for Jessica, I'm not going to be trying. But, yeah, I mean, I don't see a problem with that, really. For our three, our group there, I mean, I don't, I'm entitled to all three.
Is it all right if we pursue all three contingent requests? Redmond, Redmond requests, and then also the impact on the town?
I think it makes perfectly good sense from the business perspective and design that sewer line around, so really the lots are more valuable anyway, frankly.
Yeah. It makes sense, I see what you're saying for sure.
With sewer fed off three, it makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, it does.
Have a motion to approve pursuing this and coming back with a report on impact.
Sure, I guess you got it.
Oh, absolutely. Where do we go with Joe and Mark?
That's fine.
Motion to approve is seconded on favor.
Aye.
Did you have anything?
I'll let Mom and Dad know too. Even though I'm tied on their house, I'll make sure they're, but I don't think there's, I don't think there are any problems.
Okay. Chief Allen, bring in.
One, agenda, there is, it had been before, but he has since asked to be removed from the agenda. So we're going to take him on, but we'll let Rick come on here.
The, the park tomorrow night, we're going to hose it. The fireworks, July 4th. We know that the park won't hold the entire number of people that are going to show up. We also know that once we get a few thousand in there, that people are going to park the high school, are going to park over at Tractor Supply, and view the fireworks where they can. The Jeannie DeVoe concert, that's July 14th. We really don't know what to expect with that concert. Evidently, she does have a large regional following, but none of the other groups that we've booked have that kind of following seemingly. And so we looked at what could be done or what was available. And on face value, it appeared that the best thing to do would be to request that we close East Main Street and North Indiana and block the intersection off diagonally there. And the department has the police fire and street and myself. We're going to be Monday morning at nine to try to work out and see what would be the most logical place. And I, there's some question whether or not in this request, we should also request for an emergency backup if we find out that the crowd is larger than what that area can hold to hit a block south on Indiana and block west. In my own mind, I have real questions about the quality of the music and alike, whether it would actually be worth it. But once again, we have no concept of what the draw might be on that. And I am really open to suggestions.
I really truly think might be sense on this, and that's just the first I've heard of this, but I think that the meeting on Monday, if they could strategize on this thing and let them have a little bit on the fly rather than us absolutely say what's going to happen, what's not going to happen, and let that be determined by these guys on Monday to go ahead and figure out what they think's best. Rather than us make a decision tonight because we won't know what to make.
Yeah.
We might have to be on the fly on that day, and we're not going to meet again, so that's my, that's my.
I agree with you, Mark.
We do have a contingency. If the weather's bad, we've got the high school auditorium in the event that we do get inclement weather, but maybe if it's a nice night and if the regional draw is what we're hearing, I'm not a public safety officer. I don't deal with that kind of stuff. I don't deal with the traffic parades and everything, so I don't need their expertise.
Is there any other consideration that you can additional sound system proposition?
Well, I have not seen her setup, but she, they are bringing their entire setup. So I'm suspecting they can boot out the sound what's needed, but I think we all know that once you start creeping down Indiana Street, you're going west with the sound, it isn't going to work right. Because we know right now with the two concerts we've had, that as soon as you get around one of those buildings, it dies right there. And, you know, now we are, at this concert, we are going to have food trucks online. So, you know, we're figuring the draw is going to be a little bigger and we hope they hit the downtown restaurants and food trucks. So we're, you know, we're going to have to park those on the street, but we were planning on putting those in kind of dead sound zone so that they aren't taking up possible standing or sitting.
Not to put you on the spot, give me, just give us a guess of it on what you're expecting for this concert.
You know, I, I really don't know. I figured the way with the proposed layout without extended any, you could get 1,000 or 1,500. It'd get a little uncomfortable there at 1,500.
Yeah, that's what I was, so unless we just stop there.
Yeah, a little glass and hopefully not that much mud.
Well, with that, I make a motion that we allow the police fire chief, farm superintendent, and street department all work together in affluence ability on what their needs are. Because, you know, this is the first big concert we've had in town. It's going to be a long experience, I think.
And this could be where we learn that maybe we should keep more vocal bands, but the regional draws. But hopefully, we're going to bring some different people to town, which is the whole goal of that park.
Chief Allen, you okay with that? Dave, you okay with that? Yes. There's most none in the second half if I did it, whoa.
No, it's not fair.
Second.
I started filling out after I made it.
Motion made by Dave, seconded by Dustin on favor.
Aye. Close your trees.
I'd be taken to death to see you all there July 14th. Thank you.
You already sold me my ticket.
Could we be allowed to go first here, please? Well, if you do that, I'd want to look at the President.
Well, Mr. President, Council, I do think, one, I want to say I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to look into this and not rushing through this and getting this right. This matter of the Keswick Estates started on December 20th, 2001. The Plan Commission approved a final plat for Keswick Estates that was being developed by Fred Wittenbach Jr. and Margie Wittenbach. Ma'am, could you sit down until I'm finished on this, please? I'm sorry, but we were courteous to you when you spoke, and I appreciate the same courtesy from you. The approval by the, I think by the Mooresville Plan Commission was conditioned upon either a bond or an escrow agreement because there were improvements that needed to be made to make the development proper. The call, the estimates were $27,000. A performance bond, of course, would require a bond briefing each year, would have to be paid by the developer. So the Wittenbacher's decided on an escrow agreement. The escrow agreement was signed by the Wittenbacher's and Citizens Bank on April 18, 2002. And Mike Young signed the Plan Commission on June 27, 2002. Four copies of the escrow agreement existed. The first one was never signed by anyone, and it had only Margie Wittenbach as the developer. The other three had both Fred C. and Margie as the developer. And other than the addition of Fred C. Wittenbach as the developer on the other three, the terms of those four agreements never changed. The agreement provided that the town agreed to accommodate the developer and allow them to post $27,000 to be paid in escrow rather than posting a bond, with the town having the right to control the proceeds. $27,000 was to cover the improvements that was required by the plan of the Keswick Estates. Town was to have the opportunity to remove the money. Pay invoices provided to the town showing work had been done consistent with the estimates that were attached to the escrow agreement. Town received the signatory, required a signatory card at the bank, and the bank as escrow agent for releasing the funds pursuant to the work that was being done. If the work was not timely completed, the town had the authority to take the escrow funds and complete the work themselves. The escrow account itself was signed by the Wittenbacher's and the bank the day after the escrow agreement was signed. They signed that on April 19, 2002. The account was in the name of the town of Mooresville Plan Commission for the benefit of Margie Wittenbach. The amount deposited was $27,000. Type of account was a checking account, business checking account, and the agent was Joe Beitman, the agency billing inspector at the time. 2009, the Wittenbacher's came back to the Plan Commission and asked that the original plat be vacated and that that property be replanted. On that particular transaction, the Wittenbacher's signed on that replant that the covenants, restrictions, conditions, and provisions established and attached to the original Keswick Estates shall apply to the replant. Nothing was mentioned by the Wittenbacher's about the escrow agreement. Seven years had passed, and the Wittenbacher's had not yet completed the required improvements. Nevertheless, the Plan Commission went ahead and approved the replant and vacation. 16 years later, the Wittenbacher's have not made the improvements required, they promised in that escrow agreement. The town did not exercise its authority to take the money and make the improvements themselves. $27,000 is still in escrow of the Citizens Bank. Mrs. Crockett and Ms. Patel appeared before the town, advised that the development was being abandoned, and asked that the escrow money be released. The town agreed that they would look into that. I prepared a settlement agreement for general release to be signed, to release the money, and emailed it to Mrs. Crockett and Ms. Patel for their approval on May 22nd, 2017, 2018, sorry. May 24th, Mrs. Crockett emailed me requesting a copy of the escrow agreement. June 1, I emailed and revised the settlement agreement to Ms. Crockett and Ms. Patel. On Sunday, June 3rd, I received a message asking for a meeting with Ms. Crockett and Ms. Patel. I responded and set a meeting for the following day on Monday in my office. On June 4th, I met with Ms. Crockett and Ms. Patel, and they discussed the documents and provided me with the proposed settlement agreement. And they were asking for $125,342.58. That figures have never been reported by any of the comments made during the last two weeks. I asked them how they arrived at the $125,000 figure. They explained that they had taken $27,000 at nine and a half percent interest comp out of over 16 years. That resulted in interest of $88,342.58. If you take $27,000 and you add $88,000, $88,342.58 to it, you get $115,342.58. And they've never explained what the extra $10,000 is for. Ms. Crockett and Ms. Patel appeared before the town council meeting on June 5th. They produced the same settlement agreement they provided the meeting, seeking over $1,825,342.58, stating that this is not negotiable. Mrs. Crockett and Ms. Patel have also declared that Mr. Beitman has a conflict of interest and cannot participate as a town council member on this matter. They've also contended that Ms. Berry as clerk treasurer has not met her responsibilities as the clerk treasurer. The town has complied with all of the requirements of that agreement. Ms. Crockett and Ms. Patel are attempting to add terms to that agreement but do not exist. There is no interest to be paid on the escrow agreement either by its terms or any legal requirement of the escrow. The Wittenbacher's have not petitioned Mooresville Plan Commission to vacate the plat. Mr. Beitman was a logical agent for the account because he was a building inspector, and that put him in a position to go out and inspect the improvements when they were made, and then he could go directly to the bank, use the signature on the account, and release that money so they could be reimbursed with money in escrow. This is the type of transaction that goes on daily on development agreements. Mr. Beitman has no conflict of interest. These ladies passed out a lot of copies of a lot of documents. They've never passed out a statute appealing to conflict of interest in Indiana. Conflict of interest involves a town council member, who either he or his family ends up with some material advantage based upon the transaction involving the town, money, or some other advantage that Mr. Beitman, he goes, say the $27,000 is still there and he is not, or his family, or anybody who would come up with that statute enhanced as a result of this transaction. Ms. Berry has no responsibility for that escrow money. That escrow money was put in the bank according to an agreement signed by these parties, and that agreement controls how that money's to be held, and how that money's to be accounted for, and how that money's to be released. He has nothing to do with that as clerk treasurer of the town of Mooresville. Gentlemen, I've prepared a settlement agreement that provides a summary of what I've said here, and provides that the town agreed to pay the Wittenbacher's the $27,000 as soon as they sign the settlement agreement and go before the Plan Commission and have that plat vacated by the Plan Commission. And I would recommend that the town council approve that settlement agreement this evening at conclusion of this matter.
Questions?
I have, and I've read your book. Well, we've been at it for weeks, and I went through every document there is, studied every document in 2002. I don't, I don't need to see. I really tired of it.
We've been here all the way from Virginia, just as we've been here three, two, thirty to us.
I think we've been very courteous, you can.
We're going forward with this, you guys.
I will voice my objection one more time to the President.
I also think that we've been very courteous and we have been wanted very well, the Wittenbacher's on this. We've worked with them, and that could be a performance bond, that the escrow agreement instead, to save the money, have it paid for bond, and sign the agreement, and I think we should all be good with that.
You have a comments from the other. I'm ready to record with the agreement.
It's not anything that this is a release of funds. Why do we have to sign an agreement?
Anybody that owns a plant like this, according to an escrow agreement, is going to be part of it.
We're willing to sign it on a lease, but we're not willing to sign that agreement giving you guys all kinds of.
All the agreement provided is limited to the town and appropriate parties on any liability relating to this escrow agreement, funds being.
So you removed all the other requirements?
Yes, I did.
Okay. We'd like to see the agreement, just see the agreement.
We need to, we need to approve it first because we have not approvals. I have a motion to approve.
Before you do that, my question is this. We've already vacated the plat as our rights lender to remove any type of lines. That's already been reported. So what is the requirement of the Mooresville Plan Commission if those documents are not then recorded?
The statute, when you get a plat approved by the Plan Commission, there are easements that are granted in a plat like that, for roads, utility easements, anything like that. Or you can have to go back to the Plan Commission. If there have been any utilities put in, those utilities have to be protected.
We believe there's a lot of utilities there.
That's, it doesn't make any difference. They were put in for the benefit. They were put in for the benefit of that utility.
No, they were put in for the benefit of the development, if they're not good.
Not to argue the law, you've been arguing that on this topic. And that's why you go back to the Plan Commission. So that if there's any.
Those lots have already been vacated. What does the Plan Commission have to do with this at this point?
I just explained it.
Explain again.
The utilities weren't there. You were referring to my information, they changed, so it had to be paid. You understand that two thousand and nine, you made a Plan Commission petition, and earlier when they gave, and we, why do you think they did?
They did.
Because the Plan Commission has jurisdiction. Because the Plan Commission has jurisdiction over this development.
They pay for the utilities.
I'm just telling you that's what the statute requires.
I don't know what you're, what are they going to be doing there?
It's not interest again. It's interest that we figure to try and come up with a damages amount. The amount that we asked for was for damages.
Okay. Well, you told me it was calculated nine-and-a-half percent.
Because we told you that the nine-and-a-half percent interest was the legal rate of interest in Virginia, and we could not find or discover the legal rate of interest in Indiana. So we used the figures that we had available to us to calculate damages. It had nothing to do with asking for interest.
I'll let you tell me if that's all right.
I have a motion to approve the settlement agreement and in general release it.
I'll second.
Motion may be taken in favor.
Aye.
We will give you a copy.
Do you deserve a right to come back and sit in this before you close the session? Dead comment, have we had an object for you to agree on?
Again, we're going to go through this, and I mean, there are, it isn't there for you to go back to the Plan Commission. So I mean, you have time to think about what you want to do. You have, take all the time you need. Legal things, do you have anything else?
Nothing additional.
Other business provided for you or budgets for debt fund or you could do those and pass into comments at all, or we'll take comments better than taking them from them.
Anything else?
You have in front of you budgets?
Yeah.
Both budgets, so it's that time of year. Ferb, does any, did you have anything? Dave?
We're still making our way up the creek. Right now, we're between Washington Street and Lane Street. Practicing programs underway. We've cleaned several stomachs at the cemetery and coming up with a comprehensive map. Working with five gentlemen in baying engineering for our paving list next year. A bit of a preliminary map right now, trying to behave, but got pretty, yeah, two years, and then next week.
The ditch lines look nice. And that did their.
The slow process cleared up nice.
I think there was going to add a lot of damp pit. Thanks for your advice. Oh, there it is. Rick, did you have anything to lighten us with?
Oh, hey, we're mowing the grass and there's water in the pool.
We do have a label for us.
Mark? Anything on town patrol?
The report. I'll have that next, next.
Other comments?
This one, you can come up now?
Yes.
Okay. Couple of things. We do have a couple of handouts unrelated to this issue for the town in just the interest of trying to help you all to pull your town up with regard to how you're organizing your meetings, how you push tremendous to spear meetings, how the government is supposed to be accountable, and what rules are supposed to follow. We had planned a presentation today explaining a little bit about ourselves and why we're handling this matter in the way that we are. I think it will enlighten a lot of things for the board and the public that are here. If you all don't mind us going through this, I think that there are several things in here that may be of advantage to you. You may have taken part in some of these. There is a training for newly elected county officials in the packet that's posted with a lot of helpful numbers and addresses.
Sure. In the last meeting, I noticed you was doing, and I don't know how it is in Virginia, but we had some county officials here at the last meeting. We're town officials, not county, and the law's a little bit different between county and the responsibilities are a lot different.
Right.
As well, maybe, because there's two branches of government that performs its duty at the county level, and at the town level, you're both executive and financial body. So the county literature you're giving us probably isn't going to apply as much as for town officials, which I have reviewed that information.
Right, and I do appreciate you looking at that because I think it's all important. Just so that you all know a little bit about my background, so that you understand where we're coming from when we're presenting this information.
I'm going to object once again. I've been a town council for a long time. Since nineteen ninety-six, I took a couple of years off and then I ran again. But I don't need anyone from Virginia or anyone else, quite frankly, telling me that I don't know what I'm doing. This town is healthy. This town is honest. There's no way it's doing anything, anything wrong. And you can ask anybody out there, you can go straight. I don't need to be told by you how to run this town. I'm sorry.
Well, I appreciate, I appreciate your comment, but the state board of the county says that $27,000 isn't showing up in your accounting reports.
Well, like I said, Bill, that's, that's incorrect.
Well.
And I don't need training to be elected county official because I'm not one. Okay, I'm not one. And we agreed, we were trying to be very nice to you folks. When you came back, we tried to run through the process to get your $27,000 back because you said your parents needed money, and you came back and asked for $125,000.
That was before we realized that we stopped and people were tampered with.
They, 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 they were not tampered with. There might have been somebody broke. I'm a, I'm a, a broker, real estate broker, and sometimes those things don't match up that fur- but the teeth of the matter were there. The $27,000 has never been touched. That's the whole crux of this. And you guys gotta know that. $27,000 is never been touched, that's it.
We really don't know that.
Well, what else? What, what is wrong? Did spooch still, it's still there. It's been six, seven hours.
We're not saying that the money was taken, sir.
Tom, I'm not going to listen to that. I can leave if you'd like me to, if you want to listen to it, but I'm not going to do it. I'm not going to be preached to by these two. I'm done.
Screeching.
My gosh, you're serious?
No, not really screeching. I came to tonight to tell you guys a little bit about us, to try to get you all to understand where our difficulty is with us. And it, you know, I think if you all were in our shoes, you would understand where we're coming from.
Man, the bottom line with me is there was a contract signed. Regardless of which copy you see, it's the same except the signatures, I agree somehow.
The signatures are exact.
But the bottom line is the guts of that agreement has never changed from document to doc, even every document you gave me at the last meeting, and that was the first meeting I had addressed with you folks. Those are all the same. I am perfectly fine with the decision. If the state board of the council would like to contact us, we'll be happy to discuss it and address the problem, but they've yet to do that. Maybe they've contacted you. I couldn't see them not contacting us to say, hey, you're really messing up here.
Well, they have contacted us.
Well, I, I understand, but they've not us, and I'm not concerned about that until we get contacted.
And we understand that, that's not a problem.
Okay, and then I'm comfortable with it because there was a contract signed. Every one of those has your parents' name on it. So I'm comfortable with that. Other signatures are irrelevant to me because they signed each one of those documents. And each one of those documents have the same exact thing. Now, whether bad decisions were made at the beginning of this, which I think maybe was on your parents' behalf, because they tried to do this on their own and maybe didn't understand everything totally.
I don't think that's the issue that we are concerned about.
But with $125,000, $115,000, nine, whatever the loss, I'm not for sure what the loss is because this is the first time anyone's approached, that's trying to get money.
No, that's not, well, maybe not you specifically, but that is not the first time our parents have been up here requesting a return of money. It is not. They requested it in two thousand and nine. They request, we requested it in two thousand and fifteen. We requested it again, and, you know, last month. And again, and again, and.
Well, I understand recently, but this has went from the nineties into two thousand and eighteen.
I can produce.
And I would definitely have got myself an attorney if I was that. If someone wouldn't give me my money that I took in court and over that timeframe, I would have gotten an attorney.
There was an issue that was not brought up by Mr. Daniels in that they made sure there was not a sunset. Because during this time, the reason that the bond could not be had was because that was during the time that the banks had their issues. And no banks were granting bonds.
Not granted bonds.
I understand.
So it wasn't a matter of the financial, not being able to.
I've been practicing for thirty years, and I will tell you, when this was first approved, we're not talking about two thousand and seven. When this was first approved, you could get a performance bond if those people could meet the financial requirements for the bond.
They did get an original bond, but then it's.
But the first phase.
They needed another bond after the crash of the market, and they weren't unable to get that.
There was a crash?
Yeah, like two thousand and eight.
If this wasn't two thousand and eight, man.
This was the original escrow agreement.
I know, two thousand and two.
But there were two. One, I think, was a bond, and one, I want one's money that was put in escrow. Mr. Beben, you know that to be the case.
The way I remember it, they tried to get the bond, couldn't get it. And so we greeted an escrow agreement with it.
Right, because.
I believe that we were wrong there.
Well, I don't necessarily think you were wrong. We didn't have any problem with any of that up to that point. The problem that we have is we don't trust any of that document because we feel that it's been tampered with. And we feel that the signatures were transposed from one document to the other to make it look like, I don't know, whatever, it's just, it's, it's, it's there.
It's an identical document.
It's too identical. If you take those signatures and hold them up to the light, they are perfect.
They've been photocopied, man, but.
They've been photocopied, one from the other. You can't do that.
But there are changes in the document itself that are different because there was not a document.
But every document has your parents' signatures.
We're going to disagree on all this.
And we have to leave camp, I understand.
According to Mr. Daniels' argument the last meeting, that they've signed the agreement, the bodies are the same. It doesn't matter when the town signed it, is that what you said, sir? Okay, so by that token, I'm going to hand you the settlement agreement. Okay? Take that and, and you've received that, correct? It was signed by us, correct? Then let the town take its leisure in endorsing it, but we want our money back. That's what you all did. You all said, here's the agreement that your parents signed it. But you didn't sign it for another ten, fifteen years. But yet you're expecting us to be bound for it the whole fifteen years, from two thousand and two to two thousand and fifteen.
And fifteen years, you know, that is not ten fifteen years.
Well, we've incurred additional damages, having to come up here every meeting because of the delays of you wanting to go over with the board and make sure that you do your due diligence and homework, and make sure that you speak to each one of the board members. And, you know, that's fine. And you're agreeing, your settlement today looks to be okay, except we should not have to go to the Plan Commission. The vacation has already taken place on the plat.
He got the document with you on his pension.
He hasn't. It's already been vacated. We shouldn't have to go to the Plan Commission. You all have agreed to release the funds. And we have a right to vacate the property. As a property owner, we can put on our property whatever we want. We're the ones that pay to have the water lines run. We're the ones who pay to put the fire hydrants in, to service the house at the top of the hill and possible future development behind the house, which we did not do.
And when those improvements are put in and incorporated in the development plan, put in there easements that were dedicated in that plat for the benefit of the water.
No, for our benefit.
For our benefit of the, of the degree.
And there's no easements now because.
We'll review the document.
No, let me say one thing before you leave. You've said this multiple times. I haven't talked to any of these people.
You don't?
I have not talked to all of these board members about what I was going to say. You come up here and say you've not talked to all these board members, I have.
So how do they all know the positions if you haven't spoken to them?
I just told them my position.
Yeah, well, go ahead. I'm not going to fancy words anymore. We will look at the agreement, and we'll make a decision on who to contact at this.
Let me explain one thing to you that's going to be helpful. The statute, because all of the owners of the property, which of course is your parents, have signed the, or are willing to vacate, you do not have to give notice. You can go directly to the Plan Commission. You do not have to give notice, you don't have to have a hearing. Because the only issue there are easements and utility utilities. So there's no other property owner involved. So normally, the Plan Commission, protocol, most things have to have a hearing and give notice to property owners. Under the statute, you vacate this. Under these circumstances, you don't have to do it. So the Plan Commission meeting coming up, and you can.
Sir, just a question. Once the Plan Commission says no, we're not going to let it vacate the property.
The Plan Commission.
And you all put all the money based on her approval, and then we're still not going to get the money back?
That hasn't happened, it hasn't.
Well, no, but you can't tell me what's going to happen because it really shouldn't be tied to that in the first place.
I believe that.
We'll look at that. I mean, I don't know without the development, how many.
And if you look to bring what you gave, it has more money on it because we've had to travel again to Virginia.
Eighty-eight thousand dollars.
I said I don't believe eighty-eight thousand dollars.
I'm, I'm sorry, but she is a medical practice manager. I am a registered nurse, a faculty member. My sister works for a Level One trauma center. We're all pre-professional people. We pay money, so when we have to come back gas, we have to deal with it. You know, you guys aren't technologically savvy here where we can do a go-to meeting. We prefer to do that, honestly. So, well, I know, but you know what? I get the feeling, and I have to say, Kathy and I talked about this. You guys seem like y'all really are trying to do the right thing. But from my perspective, things are very unorganized and that you all lack systems here. And I don't have very much to do with government. I mean, I know this just through my job. And in certain ways, you guys need a little bit of help. Take the help. Get some mentors and help you guys through some of these processes so this crap doesn't happen again. These signatures were transposed from one document to the other. That's not right.
That wasn't the sport, and that was back in nineteen.
I know, and that is my point. That was not the sport.
Well, you're trying to tell us that we're not technical, we don't know what we're doing because a board back then made a decision. We're trying to do the right thing by dealing with our legal counsel, listening to what you have to say, listen to your case that you're pleading. Now, whether you agree or are happy with the decision that we make or don't make is irrelevant. And that's what this problem is today, is we're not doing what you want us to do.
No, 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 that's not the case.
Absolutely.
That's not the case. What we're trying to do today is to say, you guys weren't the people that were involved.
Well, you're trying to educate us now when we're trying to do the right thing the right way.
I'm not even going to want to be educated. He's happy and gong-gong, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I, I'm done.
You're done, too. We're going to move on.
Yeah, go on, move on.
Motion for a review of the agreement. I make a motion that we refer to the amount of $1,219,444.54. Second? Motion to maintain, seconded, on paper.
Aye.
I'll make a second.
I will second.
Motion to maintain, on paper.
Aye.
Now that fireworks are over, everybody have a good Fourth of July moment.
Absolutely.